And Ryan, you want to take role?
Yes, Hardman.
Present.
Hudson.
Here.
McKinney.
Here.
Trevillion. Trevillion, looks like he dropped off. Trimble.
Here.
Trevillion, are you there? Looks like he's on now. Trevillion?
Yeah, I'm on my phone and computer because I couldn't get my mic or my speaker to work on my computer. I don't know what's up.
Okay, so we have five members present.
All right, Ryan, any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes, Your Honor.
Move approval of agenda as distributed.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, the agenda is approved. Item two is Citizens Forum, which is a time for any citizen who may be on the meeting that wants to address the council on any item that's not part of public hearings, item six, or new business, item seven. All right, here in Nolan, we'll move on to Mayor, Council, City Manager, and other entity updates. We'll start with Angela Connolly, Polk County Supervisor, with an update. Angela?
Hi, City Council and Mayor. Thanks for having me. I hope everybody's healthy and safe. Kind of a crazy time we're in. I just wanted to give a quick, yes, I just wanted to give a quick update on what's going on. You know, I can't be unthankful for all the work that our Health Department Emergency Management Team has done on COVID-19. We meet every every single morning to discuss the community-wide response. Polk County is committed to work with all of our residents. We have, all of our services are online, and you can get them over the phone because our offices are closed to the public. But we are offering everything online. You can visit polkcountyiowa.gov for all general assistance programs. We've expanded our eligibility requirements. We're continuing to provide lunches and evening meals to our seniors by drive-by only, which is astounding because people are still doing it. We sometimes have over 100 people still coming for our senior centers to collect their lunches. We have representatives at the table from all hospital systems in the metro area that we created a medical coordination center where all joint decisions are being made on surge planning and PPE and testing strategies. And we're really ramping that up now on testing strategies, which I'm sure you've heard from the Governor's comments today. We opened up a shelter out at the fairgrounds for our homeless population and for our homeless youth. For anyone that has tested positive, kind of, at the shelter, you know, they try to do as much social distance as you can. And we've dispersed numbers there, and anyone that has tested positive to go out there with the and anybody that even thinks that they might have it so they could get quarantined for a couple of weeks. So we've made a deal with Gary Slater out there and have that fully staffed, which is good. We've expanded our team with communicable disease nurses who are responsible now for tracing close contacts in Polk County, which I think we're the only county that's doing that now. And of course, our biggest thing is really helping people in outreach on mental health. We know that this is a difficult time, so we want people to really reach out if they need to with the 211 number and use the telehealth. Because we, you know, obviously, people can't use their normal way of going out to get help. And we've also put some money in our financial health resources. We just launched empowermoney.org to schedule free professional one-on-one financial counseling if people need to that. And that's throughout all of Polk County for any people with any income, kind of help their budget. We all know budgets are stressed right now, particularly people that aren't working. There's a disaster, I'm sure you've heard about the Community Foundation Disaster Fund. That's going really well. They have, I think, close to $700,000 in that that they really started at the last flood. They've really ramped that up now to help people with food, shelter, and our immigrant refugee population. We're working on ways to help with our June primaries. They've cut down precincts' locations now to, I think, 28 to 30, from 150 to that. So we're really going to be pushing vote-by-mail options. We want every community to really push that out so we can ensure safety of not only the voters but our precincts, people in the, that are actually going to be in the actual halls. And we are now, believe it or not, well, I think next week or it might be this week, we're assembling a small group of elected leaders to start the conversation on recovery. We can't wait till that actually happens, but it's been recommended that we at least start talking about it to focus on physical, mental, and financial health. So we'll be expanding that, but we're going to just start talking about that here real soon. And I think Russ is going to be joining us on that team. And there's lots of questions about Prairie Meadows and the Iowa Event Center, and how that's all going to shake out. So we're just, you know, gonna, we don't know when that's going to open, of course, like everybody else. We can't predict that. And we'll just have to evaluate our financial situation and assess all that when the time comes. And I can open that up to questions if anybody has any.
Great. Questions for Angela?
Yeah, this is Renee. Can anyone here? Okay, first of all, Angela, I want to say thank you for all the things that you guys are doing. Just, and then I'll get to a question. Just to let you know how it matters, I called key senior citizens here in West Des Moines just to check on them and see how things are going. And both of them said they don't get out the house except to go to the meal site to pick up their meals. So it truly is making a difference. And so I'm glad we're still there for our residents. It's amazing how we really realize how the vulnerable really still depend on those services. So know that it matters. And so that was just a couple of people. Imagine all the people that are going and I don't even talk to, so I appreciate that. And then this, yeah, so the question that I have is the empower the financial assistance. So tell me how that works. People just call and they set up, they talk through their situation? Is this grant money? Tell me how the mechanics of that work a little bit, Angela?
Okay, so it's not where they can go out and actually get money.
Okay.
It is a one-on-one financial counseling. Actually, Deidra DeGier is over at the Evelyn Davis Center. That's where this is happening. And they can do this virtually or over the phone. And it's really, financial literacy is how we first were going to, you know, start it out, but now we're we're ramping it up because of the time we're in. And so we're trying to get people to understand that there are agencies out there. We're instructing them where to go if they need help for, well, if SBA ever opens up again, and I'm assuming they will here, we're hearing Wednesday or Thursday for small businesses again. You know, there's, they're going to help with Veterans Business Resource Center. They'll give them the website for that. The Women's Business Center, there's all kinds of different avenues and grants that they'll be able to help them with. It's not a real area where they're going to give them financial money, but they will give them some counseling.
Okay. Okay. And is this funded for a long period of time, Angela, or is this a short-term type deal?
No, this is now something that the county has put as a line item in our budget. It started out a year, a year or so ago that we got a grant through the, I think it was the Bloomberg through New York City, and we had to match it. And so, yeah, no, we think it's important to actually have a financial piece of general assistance, just like we do, and folks are looking for rent assistance or anything else. Now we're going to help them actually learn about their budget so they don't rely on so many other programs. So this is a line item that's going to be permanent in our budget.
Okay. And is it for just businesses or is it also for nonprofits? Is it all for individuals?
Absolutely anybody.
Okay, all the above, okay?
All income levels.
Okay, in Polk County?
Yes, in Polk County.
Okay.
Empowermoney.org is the website.
Yeah, I saw your commercial too, so I appreciate that. So, okay.
Any other questions for Angela?
This is Russ. I just want to thank you, Angela, for all that you and the county are doing during this time. And also just tell you I'm excited to join you and others on that COVID-19 Recovery Steering Committee. We've got our first meeting this Thursday at 10:00 a.m., so I look forward to representing West Des Moines on that committee and joining a number of great individuals on that committee as well. So thank you for the update, Angela, and for all you're doing. Really appreciate it.
All right, thanks. Thanks for having me. I know you guys are busy. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Angela. Take care.
Bye-bye.
You bet.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Talk with you soon.
All right, so we'll get into council reports. Renee, we'll start with you tonight.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you. Well, good evening, everybody. Hope everybody is healthy and safe and hopeful as we continue to travel down this COVID-19 journey that we're all on together. So it's really good to see everybody's faces. We, I continue to represent the city and the committees that I'm liaison of. And so they are doing what we're doing, meeting virtually. And so we had the Human Rights Commission meeting last week. And they are honing in more closely on their strategic plan. And really what they want to continue to do to stay vigilant and relevant during this time. And so I don't think the committee, the committee is really, really strong with practitioners with so much diverse background. It's almost hard to even get through a meeting because there's just so much thought and so much consideration in a lot of what we're doing. So we are finalizing the strategic plan a bit and a brochure that will be made available through online. And so there was a lot of tweaking of that. Senjita Pradam has, was elected as currently still the president for another term. She's doing a good job of leading this organization. And we decided to have a vice, a vice chair. And her name is Mindy Begonot, and she is going to be the vice chair, which we do need a backup in case things get busy with Senjita, that we have someone that can continue the deliberations and the meetings. So they did elect officers at the last meeting. So we've got some great things ahead of us and some wonderful things that we're really, truly trying to embrace. So the Library Trustee Meeting had a special meeting last week. I attended that as well. And again, I think everyone knows that, you know, with that asset being closed during probably one of the most critical times, spring break, that that was really kind of unfortunate, but we all are doing this together. So they are trying to find ways to do curbside things and make themselves a little bit more accessible, making sure that we honor the safety guidelines. But Daryl is really interested without compromising the safety of our employees, really trying to find ways that we can be accessible because everybody knows that when people are cooped up into their houses and homes, a good book goes a long way. And so, and with the educational process with kids. So I think the library is continuing to try to innovate and be accessible all at the same time of honoring social distancing. We have another meeting tomorrow at 5:00. So really happy with the work that the library is doing and trying to do in light of these times that we're in. I want to also say, I was online today, and you guys got to go out there and look at the West Des Moines Chamber. We've got a video out there. Catherine Harrington is starting conversations with CEOs. And the first one was that she launched was the one with Dan Houston. And while I know Principal is, you know, you know, it's a global organization, I cannot tell you how many great things he said about West Des Moines and the city and the zoning and things that make us so unique. It was incredible. And so if you haven't had a chance to look at that video and listen to it from what's on the Chamber website, the first one, the CEO talk with Dan Houston, the incredible things he has said about West Des Moines is phenomenal. So I wanted to get a plug out there to promote that and to number one, say thank you to Dan Houston. And number two, if you haven't seen it, it's a must-see. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you. Matt?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, just a few items here. Like Renee, a lot of our work continues despite, you know, being remote. Last couple of weeks, we've had Councilman Trevillion and I had a pretty extended Public Services Meeting dealing with some drainage in Commerce Park. And I think that that's hopefully something that, you know, we, I think we've got resolved, but if not, we'll certainly see it before the council. This morning, Councilwoman Hardman and I had an extended conversation for our development planning meeting, dealing with a controversial, I think, sidewalk issue that I think was resolved in a good way. And then, of course, we took up the agricultural animals in residential neighborhoods that will continue to make its way through the process. Appreciate Renee's comment about the Chamber. You know, this was, we had our West Des Moines Chamber Board Meeting last week. Of course, it was virtual, and it was the first meeting that Catherine Harrington had as our new executive director. And I think she's already off to a great start, as you noted on the video there. And appreciated Councilman Hudson's comments during the meeting about, about the city's commitment for that funding. And I know that went over very well. It was greatly appreciated. And then finally, I'd just conclude that, you know, it was, I think it was last week or perhaps a week before I was contacted by a business in the area that, you know, struggled to, you know, help people understand that certain restaurants were open. And there was a sign that was put out. It was taken down because of, you know, our local ordinance and compliance, and certainly understand that. But appreciated everybody's quick response to kind of suspend some of the strict enforcement during this time so that our small businesses and restaurants can, you know, have some better visibility. And just also a general appreciation to several folks that have been in communication with me over the last few weeks, just kind of multiple emails about, you know, making sure our long-term care facilities and others are protected in the community. Thank you.
All right, great. Kevin?
Nothing this time.
Greg?
Yeah, kind of echoing what Renee and Matt said, Catherine Harrington over at the new president of the West Des Moines Chamber. I mean, she really hopped into a tough situation when she started a couple of weeks ago, but as I think we all agree, she's hit the ground running. But of course, we wish her the best as she works to make West Des Moines stronger through these tough times. I also really wanted to quickly welcome Julius Arrington because I know when we got the email from him a week ago about the City Council meeting, because we normally get it from Ryan, and we got it from Julius this time. I was like, okay. So I did want to give him a warm, a warm welcome because we haven't had a W.C. Clark. And I'm sure Ryan is grateful as well. And I know that he's going to do wonderful work. So between Harrington and Arrington, just wanted to warmly welcome anyone who rhymes with that, apparently. So, and that's all you're on.
Thanks for us.
Okay, just a couple of quick updates. The F and A Committee met on April 8th. We reviewed and approved for recommendation of the full council, request from the Police Department to get a new Polaris ATV that's fully enclosed. They have a 2004 ATV that has reached the end of its useful life. And so this will be replacing that. The total cost is $35,000. And as, as you may or may not remember, our police have begun policing our trails, which has been a huge deal and extremely important for our residents. When they started doing that, I received a number of emails and text messages from residents that says they saw that our police on the trail. And, you know, just in light of the situation that we've had with Molly Tibbetts and other situations like that where, where people have, you know, been abducted and whatnot from, from trails or recreation. They really appreciate that. So this is going to help in that regard. It will also help them for use in special events. We also reviewed and approved, I think it's First State Bank's requests down on Fifth in Valley Junction. You know, they had come in asking for property tax rebate program, and we recommended that they receive that funding. They were going to do a teardown and rehab of that bank building. And with everything going on, they have come in and requested that we, they delay that project for now until we get out of this COVID-19 situation that we're in. We also reviewed and recommended approval of two projects that are on the agenda tonight for the Property Improvement Fund and the Regulatory Compliance Fund. Those projects are Melee, which is an architecture firm that will rehab 139 Fourth Street, and Capital Financial Partners at 545 Fifth Street. Both of these will be taking those retail spaces and turning them into office. After making the awards, hopefully tonight, to those entities, there will be about $28,000 left in these two funds. And we will be discussing in the very near future how to best use those funds to support the Valley Junction Business District. We may even be doing that at our next F and A meeting, which is this, this Wednesday. And then finally, we also briefly discussed a COVID-19 Small Business Relief Proposal and some contingency plans if needed. You know, the governor has essentially delayed, hasn't, she hasn't delayed the payment of property taxes, but delayed the penalty and interest. And so, you know, we weren't sure how that was going to affect our budget. And, and we're not sure, you know, what could potentially even happen in September if those payments get delayed or if the interest and penalties get delayed if people pay their taxes. It seems that they are right now paying their taxes. I would assume most of these people are paying through escrow, through their mortgages. But we, Finance Department's been looking into contingency plans in case that money doesn't come in. And then another update, just a brief update, the Parks and Rec Board Meeting was this last Thursday. Couple items of note, the girls softball program has come in and they've requested building an indoor facility, indoor practice facility in a grassy area next to their, their smallest field, which if you come in off of Fuller or 14th Street and go into the parking lot there, you'll see that small field right there off to your right. And they're looking at putting an indoor facility right there, which would involve bringing in the the fence a little bit. But, you know, this is their, I can't remember the name of the actual program, the Pee-wee program, the bunny program or something. People aren't hitting home runs anyway. So bringing that fence in, shortening that fence isn't a, isn't a huge deal. But right now, they're working through some design issues and some issues with use of materials and trying to, we're trying to make sure that those things match the other buildings in the park. So that's going to go to the Facilities Committee of Parks and Rec. And that will be coming forward at some, at some point in time in the future. We also are going to be renewing our bicycle station in Raccoon River Park. For those of you that might not know, we've got a bicycle station where you can rent the bicycles. The Street Collective said this is the fifth top-performing station in the metro. They had 1,700 trips taken from the station in 2019. It's a two-year commitment that we're looking at doing, and they're recommending using 2,500 or spending $2,500 per year for advertising, putting the West Des Moines logo on the station. The amphitheater was, it was reported that there are multiple crews out at the amphitheater and that they are ahead of schedule, which is a good thing. And the boathouse is scheduled to be open June 1st, and that is on schedule. Five park attendants recently started, and they are out in the parks from 6:00 a.m. till 9:00 or 10:00 every, every day. As you know, the playground equipment is closed currently in the park. Restrooms are closed, the shelters are closed. But we still have a lot of people out in the parks and on the trails. So they're getting, getting good use. And I think it's people's way of, you know, getting out and trying to keep sane during this time. So that is all I have for my reports.
Okay, thanks, Russ. Tom, any City Manager report?
No, sir.
Okay, item four is a consent agenda. Are there any items that any council member wants to pull? Otherwise, they'd take the motion for all of them.
Some of.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions? All right, all items are approved. Item five, old business. Five A, amend the City Code Title IX Zoning, Chapter Three, General Zoning Provision. Exempt from General Zoning Regulations, City Improvements, which promote public health, safety, and welfare. City initiated, it's an ordinance for the second, third reading, final adoption. There are no changes from the first reading.
Move consideration of the second reading.
Second.
Questions or comments? Right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, Ryan?
Five yes, an ordinance amending the City Code of the City of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2019 by amending Title IX Zoning, Chapter Three Zoning, General Zoning Provision, Sections Three, scope modifications and exceptions, subsection D, exceptions and modifications.
Hey, will you guys, will one of you guys mute your mics when possible because it was, we were getting some kind of weird feedback from the mayor's microphone while he was trying to go through that item. But with that, I would move approval to second reading.
Second.
All right, please, are all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? If that's approved, third reading.
Move waiver to third reading and adoption to final form.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, that's finalized and approved. Item B, vacation of a portion of Boonville Road right-of-way, city-initiated. It's an ordinance for the second, third reading, final adoption. There are no changes from the first reading.
Move consideration, second.
Second.
Questions or comments? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, Ryan?
Five yes, an ordinance in the City of West Des Moines, Iowa, vacating a portion of the Boonville Road right-of-way. Move approval to second reading.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, that item passes.
Move to waive the third reading and adopt.
Second.
All right, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, the reading is finalized and approved. Item C involves West Bank, so I'm on the board, so I'll need to abstain and have Mayor Parten Hardman, if she would run these two resolutions, please.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 5C under new business is not to exceed $6 million general fund capital loan notes, city-initiated. There are two resolutions that we can take together. I will read them individually. Resolution one is instituting proceedings to take additional action for authorization of a loan agreement and the issuance of capital loan notes. And the second resolution is authorize action to enter into a loan agreement with West Bank. So I'll first ask, is there any discussion?
I would move approval to resolutions.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any abstains? Okay, motion carries. Both resolutions have been adopted. Mr. Mayor?
Great, thank you. Item six is public hearings. We have three tonight. Item 6A, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider the preserve south of Raccoon River adjacent to Southwest Grand Prairie Parkway. Amend comprehensive planned land use map to designate single-family and medium-density residential land use and amend the planned unit development to establish development standards and modify signage regulations initiated by Raccoon River Land Company, LLC. Ryan, would you please read the date that notice was published?
April 4th, 2020, in the Des Moines Register.
Have you received any written comments?
The Plan and Zoning Commission, by a vote of five yes, with one abstaining and one absent, adopted a resolution recommending approval of the comp plan amendment and rezoning request.
All right, now would be the time for anyone of the public that's on the meeting that would like to address a council on this item 6A. All right, here in Nolan, I'll declare the public hearing closed. All right, here, no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. We have two items which we have to take separately. The first one is a resolution to approve the comprehensive plan amendment, and there are no outstanding issues.
Some move.
Second.
Questions or comments on the comp plan? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, the comp plan amendment is approved. The second item is an ordinance for the first reading.
Move consideration of the first reading.
Second.
Questions or comments on the ordinance? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Five yes, an ordinance amending the official zoning map and the city code to the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2019, and ordinance numbers 2383 pertaining to PUD district regulations and guidelines.
Move approval to first reading.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, the first reading is approved. Item 6B, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider the 2020, 21 fiscal year operating and capital budget initiated by the city of West Des Moines. This was continued from the March 16th and March 23rd city council agendas. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
April 10th, 2020, in the Des Moines Register.
Have you received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
All right, now would be any of the residents who are, who are listening in or participating in the meeting that would like to address any questions on the budget. Right here, no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. I know we've had a lot of conversations about this throughout the year, and Tom gave us, provided the community with a nice update here recently. So we need a resolution to approve the budget.
So moved.
Second.
Are there any additional questions or comments?
I would just make one, go ahead, Renee. Okay, I just want to make one, one quick comment, and that is, you know, I appreciate staff taking a look at and forecasting the situation that we'll potentially be in as a result of COVID-19. It's obviously very difficult to completely tell what's going to happen to our revenues. We do obviously know that, that the lost revenues, or we assume the lost revenues are going to be down, which is unfortunately also going to affect our general fund. We know that the road use tax fund is going to be down as people are not buying gas at this point in time. And unfortunately, our hotel motel revenues are going to be significantly down as well. So I appreciate staff working ahead, doing the forecasting, and being on the ready to make whatever budget reductions we need to as we see these revenues come in or not come in. I will say on the hotel motel front, Greg and I have been working through making reductions to the hotel motel awards that I believe we brought to you already for approval. It's just a, the sad reality of the world in which we are living right now. And at some point in time, at a future council meeting, we will have recommendations for amendment to the hotel motel budget to reduce some of that funding that we've, that we've already approved. I will say this, that it was very important to both Councilman Hudson and myself that in making these reductions, that we tried to do so only internally, to, you know, internal uses of city funding and those external groups that applied who are also suffering and having some issues. It is our hope that we will leave those alone. So, anyway, only comments I have.
This is Renee, and I too want to compliment the finance staff and the team, quite frankly, the leadership team, on what it takes to put together this budget. Of course, we sat through a full workshop day and learned a lot and processed a lot, and to get it down to the kind of paper that we're looking at now, we know that there's just so much more that goes into that. So really kudos to the finance team that really leads this discussion, leads this for us, and all the leaders that really kind of buy into what it is it takes to run a city and with limited resources. I want to also say, Tom, the video that you sent out was remarkable. It was great to be able to have your voice talk about how we are handling ourselves in this COVID environment and what impact that it has on services of the city. So to the degree that you can continue to do that, I think it's imperative. And so that we are certainly letting the citizens of West Des Moines know that we're looking at it, we're adjusting, we're nimble on our feet, and what our priorities are. I think it's important because we're going to have to have, make some really tough decisions. Just listening to Councilman Trimble on kind of pulling back on some of these awards that were approved not too long ago will have some impact, and we just have to be able to know that that's what it's, we have to do to survive. So let's continue to keep our public in the know. Let's continue to get the voices out because people are inundated with emails. The video that you did was remarkable, and let's continue to do that so that people truly understand that we're all in this together, and what being all in this together means is that we're all going to have some sacrifices put upon us, and we all are to get through this as a country, as a city, as in the world. So I just wanted to echo Trimble's thoughts and add a little commentary as it relates to how I feel about what we're doing here.
All right, thank you. So all in favor of the resolution to approve the budget, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Budget's approved. Item C, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider the park restroom and shelter phase two miscellaneous repairs initiated by the city of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
April 10th, 2020, in the Des Moines Register.
Have you received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
Right now would be the time for anyone in the audience to address the city council on item 663. All right, here, no one, I will declare the public hearing closed. Again, we have two resolutions and a motion which we can take together, and this came through the Public Services City Council Committee meeting.
Move approval.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
I do have a question. And I meant to call Brian earlier today, but I didn't get a chance to do this, and I really appreciate the grid and the matrix, and it's probably my lack of understanding, quite frankly, is the root of the question. How did one person come in so incredibly lower than all the others? Are we talking about 6C?
Yes.
Yep, this is Brian Hemiseth.
I just was like, is there still good quality? When you, when you have that big of a gap, and again, charge it to my, me not knowing, but I, I found that kind of alarming, and I was like, oh, I hope we're still getting good quality. Is that a fair question, Brian?
Yep, Brian Hemiseth, city engineer, that is a fair question, and we get that every so often when we have bids that come in very low. In this type of a situation, it may be a situation where some of the things happening around us are causing people to lose out on some work and are really, they know that this is solid work for them, so they're willing to cut their prices a little bit to get the job. And we don't know of anything about this company that is, is poor, or we haven't heard any, anything bad about them. So staff's recommendation is to go ahead and word to the lowest bidder.
Okay, and I, and I'm not opposed to that, and thank you for that, Brian. I just was, that gap was just so large. I want to make sure we're not stuck with poor quality. And again, I'm not saying that's a poor quality company. I don't know anything about them, but to come in so significantly lower, I hope we're still getting quality, is all I'm saying.
Yeah, I think we're okay.
Okay.
Okay, all in.
I just want to, I'm sorry about that. I just want to make a quick comment because this is, you know, this isn't sexy stuff here, but this is extremely important. So I want to thank Parks and Rec and the engineering department for staying on top of this stuff and continually doing the maintenance necessary to, you know, keep our Parks and Rec fresh. I mean, there's, you know, a lot of little things that are wrong with various, you know, shelters, restrooms, you name it, and the fact that we're staying on top of it and fixing stall doors and whatever needs to be fixed, I think the public really appreciates that very much. So thanks for staying on top of this.
All right, all in favor, 6C, one, two, and three, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, that item passes. Item seven, new business, 7A, that preserves estate flat one, east side of Southwest Grand Prairie Parkway, south of the Raccoon River, subdivide property into 12 residential lots and two street lots, Raccoon River Land Development Company, LLC. It's a resolution to approve the preliminary plat, and there are no outstanding issues.
Move approval.
Are there any questions or comments? All right, all in favor, please say aye. Oh, sorry, Matt. Yep.
Some problems on mute there. I just wanted to say I appreciate Brian Hemiseth working with me and Tom. One of the things in this particular area is we have a connection fee that's required, and this is almost double the next highest connection fee in our city, and as far as I know, it's one of the highest in the greater Des Moines area by far. And so I know that Tom and Brian are exploring this and just, just what that entails. So I know there's continued work on this.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, all in favor of 7A, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, the preliminary plat is approved. 7B, water tower lighting, 505 South 50th Street, approval of minor modification to allow elevated directional lighting. West Des Moines Water Works, it's a resolution to approve the minor modification. I know we were all included in a, in a testing of that one evening, and from my understanding, we didn't have any resident complaints, and it seems like the lighting, at least from what we saw on the test, was is that it pretty much confines itself just to the water tower. So there are no outstanding issues, and it came through Planning and Development Council Committee as well.
Move approval.
Second.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, this is Matt. I just, I, I understand that, you know, this approval is not for funding. It's basically, it went through planning and zoning, and, you know, we've had a lot of conversations tonight about kind of the impact that we're all going to have as a result of this pandemic, you know, from, from the state perspective, the city perspective. And, you know, there's a lot, you know, that Supervisor Tonley talked about in terms of those that are in need in our community, food banks and others, obviously small businesses as well, you know, and what is the city or others going to do? At the same time, you know, during our budget workshop on January 25th, I heard a lot of great things that have been done and a lot of things that need to be done, and that would be preferred to have done from public safety to our library and some other things. And so I'm just, I'm just concerned on the cost perspective. I know that's not what we're approving tonight, but I just want to put it out there as we all explore where we're funding goes on this.
Yeah, I would, I would actually echo, I would actually echo what, what Councilman McKenney had to say, and I'm supportive, but I am a little hesitant for a couple of reasons, one of those being that, first, I'm glad we didn't receive any complaints during the trial run, but despite the study, I'm always a little concerned. I had a, there was an incident that a couple of years ago in where I'm from in Missouri, but, and I don't want to get into that because it's not important. However, I'm still a little concerned that that constant presence of lights will annoy residents nearby, even though it is isolated, whether it be extra light pollution or sensitive eyes at night. I think there's a couple of things. I also know of another Iowa city that has sold hours of different colored lights to its residents. For example, if the Chiefs win the Super Bowl, you can pay 50 bucks to color it red for an hour. And, I mean, I, I wanted to see the Chiefs win, I really, really did, but I'm really opposed to that idea, I think, lighting up the water tower in red or something. I don't think that's exactly a good idea. I think shining a regular light in West Des Moines is a good idea, but, because we're a fantastic city, but I really don't want these license to be a nuisance or a problem in the future that residents are going to complain about. And furthermore, much like Councilman McKenney, I'm worrying about the cost, even though that's not specifically what we're talking about right here. So I want to share that.
I mean, address this, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead, Tom.
Well, first of all, we've been working on this project for over two years with West Des Moines Water Works, and the total project cost is like 72,000. The city is half. We could come up with the funds from the capital improvement program we had this current year. As you see, some, some bids come in low. In this case, we could, this 36,000 could be easily covered by bids that have not, have come in low. The Musco is doing the, Musco's doing the lighting. They are a top-notch company in the country and Iowa. This is very directional LED lighting, so I don't, I have very much confidence in them. And another thing you want to think of for marketing for the city of West Des Moines, we just discussed how we've been hit hard by our hotels, our businesses, our lost and hotel motel tax. This lights up, this is great marketing for $36,000. That's the only, our only cost because the water works is going to upkeep, and it's right along the major interstate highway system. So I think it does a lot of things in return for the city for a pretty relatively small cost.
Yeah, I mean, we're spending hundreds of thousands of dollars for five entry signs into our city.
Absolutely. And I, and I too, I want to just lend my support of the project, and I think all of us are supportive, and I know that we're all in times where retrenchment is kind of like our first, you know, point of conversation. But I, I do think this has been worked on for a while. I think that, you know, quite frankly, it, we need something kind of positive too, you know, in a way, you know, let the light shine and let the light shine on the city of West Des Moines, that we're an opening city and we welcome, and here we all are. But I, I appreciate what's been said in terms of trying to manage costs. I just think there's probably a lot of other things that we can look at to manage costs that might have a bigger and even more direct impact than the 34, $35,000 here.
I've just got a quick question on this one for Tom, and that is, are other cities around the metro doing this? I feel like I've seen, I don't know if it's Clive or Urvendale, are other cities doing this?
Most cities have done this a long time ago. Most, a lot of water towers have already been lit, and, you know, what Greg was saying, we're not going to do a multi-color thing, we're just doing basic white light to do this, so we're not doing anything fancy. We looked at that, but we keep the cost down, we're doing this way, but I, no, yeah, there been, there's a lot of water towers lit throughout the metro area.
Okay, I thought that was the case. I can tell you this, the state Capitol is lit as well, and, and Musco did that job. And if you drive by and look at the Capitol at night, it's just beautiful. You know, I don't know that that does any, that's any marketing necessarily there, but, you know, Musco did do that job, and they did a very nice job, and Capitol looks great at night, so.
Okay, all in favor of 7B, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Minor mods approved. Item C, Shields Warehouse, 175 South 9th Street, Building 300, request to waive city code requirement for curbs. Shields All Sport, Inc. I guess, Tom, I didn't see a staff recommendation, the request that the city council accept the curbing as constructed and waive requirements for a minimum four-inch curbing as stated in city code. So I don't see a staff recommendation, I don't see that this came through a council subcommittee, so is there any additional information that needs to be shared?
Well, they had a rolled curb, and we've looked at it, and we're trying to work with them to say, roll curb into some river rock, and when you look at overall, it's, it's, it works fine, it's an industrial area, and we don't, we don't think it has to go back to committee, but we do need to get this approval from you, from the council tonight to, it's, for the site plan, and Lynn can chime in here if she needs to, needs to.
I'm, I'm, I'm fine with this, I'm fine with this. I just, you know, I just don't want to get in the habit of this, though. I know we've done this, we've had situations like this before where a developer has done a project, and at the end of the day, you know, they, something was screwed up, they didn't do something to city code, and in one case, I think they put the building too close to the setback, and the building was already there. But I just, I'm fine approving this, I just don't want to get into the habit of having this happen repeatedly where somebody, the next person comes through and says, hey, just do the roll curbs, just do it quick, and, and once you get done, you know, they'll waive it like they did for me, you know?
Right. We agree with you, Russ, on this. In this case, we just bought an area that it's, they've done a nice job. We did go back to them and said, they do have to finish their landscaping aspect, they were asking for relief from that, and we said they still have to have that done. have to have that done to get the completion.
Yeah, I, I think this kind of stuff happens so few and far between, but if it starts happening more often, we're going to have to maybe put our foot down. But I'm fine with this tonight.
Okay, you want to move it, Russ?
Yeah, I would, I would move approval to waiver.
Second.
Any other questions or comments? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, waivers approved. Item 7D, Woodland Hills Urban Renewal Area, approval of amendment to the TIF ordinance, city initiated ordinance for the first reading. There's no outstanding issues, and it came through Finance and Administration Council Committee.
Move consideration of the first reading.
Second.
Questions or comments? All right, and all, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any extension? All right?
Five yes, an ordinance amending ordinance numbers 1935, 2315, and 2400, providing that general property taxes levying collected each year on certain property located within the Woodland Hills Urban Renewal Area be paid to a special fund for payment of principal and interest on loans, monies advanced to and indebtedness, including bonds issued or to be issued incurred by the city in connection with the Woodland Hills Urban Renewal Area.
Move approval to first reading.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? First reading's approved. Item 7E, Amendment to City Code, Title 6 Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 6 Parking Regulations, modify the requirements for prohibited parking. City initiated. This is also an ordinance for the first reading. There's no outstanding issues, and it came through the Public Services Council Committee.
Move consideration. Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any extensions? All right, Ryan?
Five yes, an ordinance amending the city code to the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2019, amending Title 6 Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 6 Parking Regulations, Section 1 Parking Prohibited.
Move approval. Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? First reading's approved. Item 8, there are no items to receive, file, and/or refer. Item 9, other matters, are there any other matters that any council member wants to raise tonight? All right, here and none, we, we will adjourn this meeting. Thank you very much.
Thanks, everybody. Take care.
Thank you.
Take care, everybody.
Thank you.